Hello, my friends. Welcome to today's episode of Stand Up. We've got the great Bill B. in DC joining me for another really interesting, wonderful conversation. Love getting his take on all things foreign policy, domestic policy, and other subjects. Always great to talk with Bill. That conversation starts at 22 minutes after the news. But I am up late with today's program. Usually try to get it posted by midnight for you with a great news recap and an in-depth conversation with someone really, really smart. That's the format of the show. Doesn't happen every day, Monday through Thursday, and sometimes there are exceptions when I have something to do at night, like I did last night, which was showing up for the LGBT community in my school district, the Clarkstown School District in Rockland County, New York. And at stake, the right-wing MAGA movement in my town pulled out some language from the guidance on how teachers, administrators, and staff should deal with, understand, and support students who are LGBTQ, who are transitioning or using different labels, different pronouns. The extremists in my town followed the right-wing playbook you're seeing playing out across the country, and they have been for years now. We've been beating them. We beat them at the last two elections, and last night, we beat them again. Now, this wasn't a board election. It was a debate on this policy regarding LGBT youth and whether or not their parents should be notified if the student asks to start using new pronouns. Now, here's the thing. They already know. The parents know long before the teachers, in the vast majority of cases, that their kids have now decided to, chosen to, evolved to come out using different pronouns. Say what you will. If you have a different opinion on these pronouns, that's not even what it is. The question, the claim, the insinuation was that you were taking our parental rights. How dare you? This is egregious. This is atrocious. This is insane that you wouldn't tell us if our kids were using different pronouns. Again, the parent almost always knows long before the teacher and everybody else in the school. But if it's not the case, in the rare situation and in the several phone calls that I made to teachers, to staff, to the guidance counselor, to the superintendent, nobody could think of an example where the student said, please don't tell my parents. But of course, the state and experts on the issue understand that there are some scenarios, too many scenarios, where the child is abused at home if it's found out. The child could be kicked out of the house. If you want to be a boy, go ahead. You're not going to do it here. I don't love you anymore. You're not my daughter anymore. All those kinds of horrible things that a parent could say to a kid because he or she himself is actually scared about. They might be a few beers away from a dick, if you know what I'm saying. I'm just psychoanalyzing the parent who is abusive. We all have the ability to be ignorant and confused and not understanding. But it is your child. It is your child. You always love your child. Not hard. You accept them, as hard as it may be for you. It's not about you. So, there really weren't many examples given of a child that anybody could think of that had this issue at their home, where they didn't have the support, where they were worried. In our district, now, it may have happened. It may very well have happened. But the point was, the question was, should parents be notified if their kids are using different pronouns? And the conversation was centered around, in the rare occasion where a child could suffer harm, where the child comes to us and says, I am scared. If my parents found this out, we would have several staff work with that student, talk to that student, try to understand what they are dealing with at home, and potentially even make a call to Child Protection Services if the child is being abused at home. It was a perfectly reasonable policy for a very rare but potentially dangerous situation, not to mention all of the dangers around that child hurting or harming themselves if they're not accepted in school or at home, et cetera. We won 5-2, another big success, and it was all because we organized to get the right people on the board. Smart people, thoughtful people, caring people. And you can too, or at least you should try, in your town. I always love to share these triumphs for you and let you know that we do have wins. We do have light. We do have the ability to help. And, well, frankly, I think we should do what we can. And now, here is my three minutes from last night's Board of Education meeting, and I opened with my response to the leader of this movement and the guy who is terrified that the school may not tell you, or me, or him, that his kid is non-binary, trans, gay, whatever it might be. And he said this was a brazen attempt to control our kids and that we were boxing out the parents. And many other remarks in his three minutes. Well, I got to go up after him, so you'll hear me at the opening just respond back to the absurdity of those claims. And then I went into my prepared comments, and I can perform in front of thousands of people in a theater or at a comedy club. I can perform on TV or at a radio without getting very nervous at all. But these kinds of things are nerve-wracking. You probably hear a little bit of my voice. But I think I did a decent enough job. And if this situation comes up in your school, feel free to lift my comments. And also, feel free, if you hear these comments and disagree with anything about what I'm saying or the policy, love to hear from you on that as well. Here it is from last night.
Thank you very much. My name's Pete Dominic. I live in Congress. I have read the 42 pages as well. And in a response to Mr. Bradley, I would say the only thing bold and brazen is parents outing other parents' kids' sexual orientation and gender identity. It is bold and brazen to do that. Nobody's boxing your children out. It's an absurd dishonest characterization of what's happening in our schools. There's zero evidence to make such a ridiculous claim. Frankly, it's maddening to be back here to have to argue about another thing that just isn't an issue, another made-up controversy posted on Facebook to scare parents into thinking our amazing Clarkstown teachers, educators, and staff are purposely, purposely keeping information about our kids' gender identity from us. Because why? Well, here's the good news. It's not a thing. It's not happening. It may never have even happened in our district. How do I know? Because I use my comprehensive parental rights afforded to me. I spent the last week contacting teachers, guidance counselors, board members, David Gosman, definitely give back to me. And even our great superintendent, Mark Biaco, who consistently makes himself available to any and all concerned parents, a great parental right. And I suggest you take advantage of it before you post things that aren't true. Here's what I found out. There are very few students that these teachers know identify with different pronouns or as trans, now or ever. Do you have a son or daughter in Clarkstown schools? Ask them if they even know anybody who identifies that way. They'll, like you tell you, maybe a few, maybe this one kid. Moreover, within that small group of students, none of several teachers and guidance counselors I spoke to could think of the scenario where the parents were boxed out, uninformed, and understanding about it. So, why are we here talking about this situation? I highly doubt that any of the people here who are concerned about this issue have kids who identify as trans, gay, or non-binary. They are here to out the kids who are? Really? Potentially ruining kids' lives, dreams, putting them in danger? If I'm wrong about how uncommon this is, I suppose anybody on the board or anywhere else can show us accurate information. But I learned, in fact, the only way a parent might not be given this information about their child, very rare, but still too common a case, where a child tells a teacher they would be in danger if their parent found out. But wait, there's more good news. All the social science says that if you create a safe and loving atmosphere for your child, they're far more likely to come to you with issues about gender identity or sexual orientation than if you make them feel afraid and create scary home where they might be concerned you won't love them, or worse, hurt them, kick them out. Sadly, this happens way too often. If you're worried that your kids won't come talk to you, so worried, so worried, in fact, that they would go talk to a teacher first, then this is a sign of a problem that you are having. The relationship with your child, there's bad news. Parents often abuse, hurt, and their own kids physically, verbally, and even sexually. This happens far too often for kids who identify as LGBTQ. So, let them know that we're here for you. We support you. We love you. We will not let you be outed. It's up to you.
Okay. Well, there were a lot of, a group of young students from the LGBT club in the school that also spoke. That's most of who you heard applauding, as well as other people from the group that we organized to get our amazing neighbors and friends elected to the board. So, the thing is, just want to be clear, you don't have to speak. I'm sure a lot of people could never do that. It's really nerve-wracking. It's very hard, even for someone who's a professional like myself, to put yourself on the line publicly in front of people who have in the past actually threatened you and followed through on some of those threats. I do believe these are the same people who called in a false complaint to Child Protection Services on me and my family, causing my daughters to have to be interviewed by special victims detectives. Luckily for us, we raised awesome daughters who made it very clear to both detectives immediately what this was all about, an effort to silence their dad for speaking out and being involved in the community as an activist against their Moms for Liberty MAGA bullshit. Of course, our family was cleared of any wrongdoing and have been well-supported by my friends and neighbors as a result of that happening. It's tough, though, to get up there. The point is, you don't have to put your name on the line. You have to vote, and it's great when you show up at meetings like that just to show that people care, to applaud and react, to show energy. That, I don't think, is too much of a risk in most communities. So, I highly encourage you to be involved on Facebook groups or in text chats and Slack chats, like any other organization or company or movement, so that you know what's happening and so that you can react to it before it gets too far down the road and makes it harder, before too many people get radicalized far too often with misinformation like happened here. Parents were up in arms, what's going on? And then when they finally hear it, they're like, no, no, we don't want kids to be abused by their parents. No, no. If the kid's going to get abused, yeah, no, that seems reasonable, including with one of the board members that doesn't usually vote with us on these types of concepts. And she did last night. So, big win, a big triumph. And I appreciate your support and your patience with the fact that I didn't get the podcast up or as robust of a news segment today. But I will say this about yesterday's news, ladies and gentlemen. Here it is, rapid fire. Special Counsel Jack Smith urged the Supreme Court to immediately step in and decide whether Trump is immune from criminal prosecution. The United States vetoed a UN Security Council resolution demanding an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. The Texas Supreme Court temporarily blocked a pregnant woman from obtaining an emergency abortion, and she left the state. And it was a huge story yesterday. The Supreme Court declined to hear a case challenging a ban on conversion therapy designed to protect LGBT youths. A federal judge banned the federal government from separating families at the US southern border for eight years, and the head of OPEC oil cartel directed the group's members to, quote, "reject any text or formula that targets the continued production and sales of oil, gas, and coal rather than emissions." That's the only language that they get to use. So, that's yesterday in one sentence from advisors. WTF just happened today? I would only add, a wrongfully convicted Minneapolis man was freed after spending 19 years in prison on a murder charge, which is always huge news, bittersweet. The draft of the UN Climate Agreement fell short of calling a phase-out of fossil fuels. Countries most at risk from global warming called it a death warrant. Around 2009, America's roads started to become deadlier for pedestrians, particularly at night. I blame text messaging, but I haven't read that article. Profit margins have recovered to levels that would have set records before the pandemic. Corporations are experimenting with prices to keep them high. Huh. I wonder if we needed any studies in journalism to tell us that. And in Gaza, conditions are deteriorating rapidly as battles rage between the Israeli military and Hamas and Khan Yunis, largest city in Gaza's south, with aid deliveries becoming increasingly difficult and humanitarian zones for displaced people shrinking. Quote, Gaza's health system is on its knees and collapsing, according to the World Health Organization Director. And the final story I want to mention to you is, and in the, quote, "discovery of a lifetime," an artist and fossil hunter found the six-foot-long skull of a large carnivorous reptile that has ever lived. And that is pretty cool. A dragon? Maybe it's a dragon. Yeah, I'm going to believe it's a dragon. All right. Well, those are your headlines from yesterday. Now, a couple pieces of audio to explain some of those headlines and more. First of all, let's head over to a panel that aired on MSNBC yesterday. Ali Velshi hosting kind of a hot take, immediate reaction to the breaking news, the big news yesterday, that the Supreme Court will consider Jack Smith's petition in the Trump election case. They got word on the air, and you get to hear that and their real-time reaction, which I think is interesting. Dave Aronberg, State Attorney for Palm Beach County, talking to Ali Velshi on MSNBC yesterday.
But it hasn't ruled yet. And so, Jack Smith wants to speed this whole case along, the DC election interference case. That's the only case that I think is going to be heard before the election. And the US Supreme Court just now said that they will consider it. So, it's game on, and that's a good thing. That shows the Supreme Court takes this matter seriously and wants Trump's trial in DC to actually be heard before the election.
Okay. So, this is a, this is a very big, that I think we need to, but the big breaking news banner is, the Supreme Court will hear this. They are asking Donald Trump to respond, to file a written response. They are going to consider this, but they're asking the respondent to file a response to the petition before 4:00 PM on Wednesday, December 20. So, one of the things we were discussing at the beginning of the show was whether this would happen, whether the Supreme Court would hear it, but more importantly, the timeline, right? The reason Jack Smith went to the Supreme Court is because he wants his trial to start in March, and Donald Trump would like this trial possibly to never happen. The danger was that the Supreme Court doesn't hear this.
Right. Trump wants his trial to happen half past never.
Yes.
And the issue is, the appellate court, they were sitting on the gag order. It took them weeks, and they're like, come on. And so, Jack Smith saw the writing on the wall and said, hey, Supreme Court, you're going to get this case anyways. Do it now. And the Supreme Court, just like they did in 1974, US v. Nixon, decided to intervene.
Okay. So, the news here is not that a decision has been made. It's that the, Jack Smith's motion to consider whether or not Donald Trump enjoys immunity from certain prosecution by virtue of being president, they are prepared to consider it, and they are asking Donald Trump for a response, or Donald Trump's lawyers for a response by 4:00 PM ET on Wednesday, December 20. Big news. We'll tell you more about it on the other side.
And I met that lawyer, David Aronberg, at Glenn Kirchner's event last summer, and he said he'd love to come on the show, and I haven't had him on yet. So, that reminds me, I got to reach out to Dave, and we'll get him on, get his analysis. Adding him to a great list of legal analysts that I talk to on a pretty regular basis to help explain and understand what the hell is happening in all of these legal cases. And speaking of legal cases, the other big story yesterday was about the woman who was denied an emergency abortion by the Texas Supreme Court. Her name is Kate Cox. She's been forced to flee the state in search of medical intervention, according to the Center for Reproductive Rights. Well, here's how it sounded yesterday on CNN when that news broke, and they went to Texas, where my old friend Ed Lavandera was there to explain what went on and the details here in about three minutes. Ed's a great reporter and adds a lot of context in this three minutes about that case. So, I wanted to share that with you as well.
...to a statement from her attorney. Now, Cox's fetus has a fatal condition, and doctors have told her that continuing her pregnancy threatens her ability to have more children. The Texas Supreme Court has temporarily blocked her from terminating that pregnancy. CNN's Ed Lavandera joins us now live from Dallas. So, Ed, what are we learning about her decision to leave?
Well, her lawyers say that because she has been caught in this, quote, "legal limbo" for specifically the last several days and much of the last week, that because of that, Kate Cox has decided to leave Texas and get the abortion elsewhere. Her lawyers are not saying exactly where she's going, but in the statement, they did say that she had offers of help from places in Colorado, Kansas, even Canada as well. Let's get to some of the statement that her lawyers released just a short while ago, where she's, where they said, her health is on the line. She's been in and out of the emergency room, and she couldn't wait any longer. This is why judges and politicians should not be making healthcare decisions for pregnant people. They are not doctors. This is the result of the Supreme Court's reversal of Roe v. Wade. Women are forced to beg for urgent healthcare in court. And that kind of echoes the theme that we've heard from lawyers for the Center for Reproductive Rights, that is the organization that has been representing Kate Cox here for the last week in her case. She, the lawyers had also said that throughout most of the last week, she has been asked several times, why not just leave the state originally? Her lawyers had said that she wanted to have the procedure here in Texas. This is where her home is. She wanted to be close to family. But clearly, what has unfolded here in the last several days has changed that calculation, where we now have learned that Kate Cox has left Texas to get this abortion procedure done. We have reached out to the Attorney General's Office, Republican Ken Paxton, who over the weekend issued, or submitted another motion to the Texas Supreme Court, saying that they did not believe that Kate Cox's condition rose to the level of reaching the medical exemption in Texas. And we have been waiting for the Texas Supreme Court to make its ruling since Friday night, but so far, no movement there legally. So, obviously, this legal limbo is what lawyers say has forced Kate Cox to leave the state of Texas. Boris?
Ed, on the question of getting clearance to obtain the procedure and the level that legally it has to reach for it to be defined as life-threatening, I'm wondering if this fatal fetal issue is not life-threatening for Texas officials, then what is? Have they given a clear definition?
Well, that definition of what reaches the medical exemption is at the heart of all of this. It's not just a part of Kate Cox's case, but there's also a case involving 20 women and two doctors that is also sitting before the Texas Supreme Court as well, as these organizations and critics of the Texas abortion ban have been very critical of this, what they consider to be the vagueness of the medical exemption law. They say more clarity is needed in that.
All right. There you go. Ed Lavandera in Dallas explaining it to us very, very well. A lot of context there. So, I wanted to put in the whole about three minutes on that story. And that is all of the news and audio I've got for you. Slightly abbreviated news segment, because I wanted to share what happened last night, and I got home late, and I want to get this up by 7:00 AM, and I'm already late. So, let's get to my conversation with Bill Boyle. And just remember, I cannot have these conversations without your support. So, your $5 or more, and a lot of you pay a lot more, means everything. We have about 700 subscribers. The goal has always been to get to 3,000, but we need to promote this show, and it's not, because we aren't doing great work here. It's a matter of promotion and marketing in a very, very busy, crowded field. But you get the best news recap here and a thoughtful conversation with a real smart person each and every day, six days, a week, sometimes more. So, please go to patreon.com/petdominic and sign up now. And look at what we've done and what we have built without a huge team of producers. You ever listen to the New York Times podcast? My friend Joe Leota, who listens to us here, supports me here, mentioned it again. Hey, you listen to the New York Times daily. At the end, they say like 47 names and corporate sponsors. Send me your pal Pete Dominic, five bucks, and I'll do better. How about that? All right. That was a pretty effective promotion of my work. Thank you very much. All right. Bill B., Bill Boyle, is an old friend of ours. He started as a caller on the old Sirius 6M live show, and he has become one of your favorite guests here. We love Bill because he's not a pro. He's not doing this for the money. And so, does that create a more often honest and sober analysis of the issues that we talk about? Why does Bill know so much? No idea. He's a well-read, well-connected, super curious, very articulate fella, and we're always happy when he joins us. Here now, my latest with the great Bill Boyle. All right. Well, if I was going to reach out to anybody to talk about a bunch of things this week, because I'm going to go skiing, I would want them to hear my conversation with you. Bill B. in DC, the great Bill Boyle, thank you very much for taping with me today. Lots to talk about. Hi.
How are you? Thank you for having me.
Yes. I have several issues that the people would like me to throw your way. First, I wanted to start with Ukraine, an update on the conflict, because it's been obviously crowded out for the Middle East and other stories. And so, an update on the conflict. And, you know, I guess you could tie it back to our Congress and the fact that we haven't passed funding, although apparently, they went around Congress to give tank munitions to the Israelis. But that's a whole other conversation. What's the latest on Congress and whether or not they're going to support Ukraine by Christmas?
Yeah. To be clear, that, that sort of end run they did to supply ammunition to Ukraine, that was the White House that did that.
It was Israel, I think, not Ukraine.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, to Israel. It was the White House, the State Department specifically at the headquarters of the White House to do that. Congress didn't lift a finger, or the House, the House Republicans, I should be clear, did not lift a finger to help Israel either. Where we are with Ukraine is sort of like Chamberlain's flying to Munich kind of moment, right?
That may not mean a lot to everyone. Obviously, I know more about history than most, and I'm almost an expert on Chamberlain specifically and his flights, flight patterns.
Flew famously in 19, I guess, '38 to make a deal with Hitler, because he, as he said, was like, I couldn't imagine us fighting a war in some faraway place for people who we know nothing of.
He was the British Prime Minister?
He was the British Prime Minister.
Yeah. Okay.
And he was the, he was the leader of the appeasement faction in British politics then, which, there's a very profound argument you can get into about Chamberlain, whether he was all as bad as he looks. But he, he very definitely believed in avoiding conflict with the Germans way past the point where avoiding that conflict made any sense at all. If he's got one slight thing in his favor, it's that he knew how poorly set up Britain was to fight a war at that point. And in the background, was feverishly trying to get British war, war industries caught up. So, okay, there's the nice thing about Never Chamberlain. The bad thing is that he really thought that Hitler was someone, as he put it, that you could do business with. And so, he went to Munich, and he made this deal with Hitler, and he came home famously waving, and he said, I've got, I've gotten peace in our time, right? And you can find the video on, in fact, if you follow my Twitter feed, I posted a GIF of him getting off the plane the other day. Where we are right now with Ukraine is that our right wing hates our middle and left so much that just to hurt our middle and left wings in the United States, they're willing to help out a fascist dictator in Russia, start a major conflagration in Europe. And this is the sort of thing, you saw this sort of thing happening in France in the 1930s. You saw it happening in England in the 1930s. This is where democracies destroy themselves, because they get so caught up in their own domestic political, you know, animosities, that they stop paying attention to what's going on in the world. And where the United States is right now is that we're living off the earned strategic capital that previous administrations and generations have built up for us. In other words, our, this is NATO, this is our defense industry, everything else.
Not to mention military bases and weapons systems, things that might not be able to be created if you had today's Republicans in control of the budget.
Right. And so, these guys, though, they have this very blasé attitude about these things, because they've never lived in an era where the United States can't enforce its will when it really needs to. If Ukraine falls, that's not necessarily going to be true. If Ukraine falls, the whole structure of the world that is designed to support American hegemony starts to crack and shake. And when hegemonies start to fall apart, wars proliferate, you know, people take their chances. China will be looking at Taiwan. Russia, if it gets Ukraine, will very certainly take Moldova next, and will then very certainly start looking at the Baltic States next. You know, it's, there's a, it's a, it's a house, every hegemony is a house of cards. When I say hegemony, by the way, I don't necessarily mean that in a negative way. There is a way that the world works right now. There are rules that have been agreed on. And those rules, while they're still great at injustice and terrible and stupid things happen, they do to some degree limit the chaos and the bloodshed and the death. And when, you know, I say to people, they go, what about Vietnam? Or what about this? Or what about that? They say, no, 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 no. You don't remember what 1940 was like.
Right. Right.
Fifty-five.
Yeah. I mean, this is not, your, your theory about hegemony is not the Boyle doctrine. I mean, there's a lot of people who...
You know, I mean, the way I look at it is kind of different, because I'm not in any school, you know? I'm just a guy.
Okay. Maybe it is the Boyle doctrine. You love hegemony. Go ahead and talk about how much you love it.
I see it in a very...
In your own life, in your own family.
I don't moralize, yeah, I don't, exactly. My own personal hegemony, which extends about to the door of my office, and that's where it ends. But, you know, I'm not attaching, I'm not saying that, like, America's on some moral crusade. I'm not saying that America's evil either. It's a very sort of, I think, nuts and bolts way to look at things. As we talked about last time, you know, to me, American hegemony is only valuable in the sense that it's a lot better than the alternatives would be, which, the realistic alternatives. Because the realistic alternative would not be a globally-run UN government that would be fair to everybody. It would be a bunch of regional hegemonies with very rapacious powers, right?
Right.
And so, the bottom line is, we are right at this moment with these clowns and the GOP in the House. They're just seeing Ukraine aid as, oh shit, Biden might get a win. And we cannot let Biden get a win, right? Even though it's not a Biden win, it's a national win for us. It's a, it's a, it's a win for everyone who cares about democracy, everyone who cares about there not being genocides, everyone who cares about there not being a major war in Europe. Because major wars in Europe are the big kahuna. The last two really profoundly big wars were in Europe for a reason. It's where the resources are. It's where the people are. It's a, and it's a bunch of different nations robbing up against each other. And we have managed since 1945, through NATO and other ways, to keep the peace there.
And it's such a minimal investment to create a potentially long-term peace.
Correct.
And, and keep American soldiers from having to fight as a result of our NATO membership. Although, I guess if Trump were president, he'd be like, wouldn't, he wouldn't abide by it, I suppose.
I think if, I think if, well, so they passed a law that does not let Trump or any president easily pull out of NATO now. That being said, he could just not send the troops.
That's what I'm saying. Like, listen, we're still, we still want to be in NATO. We just don't want to do some of the things we agreed upon.
I will tell you that in one of the very few situations where I could see more than half of the Republicans voting to impeach him would be Russia violating Article 5 and Trump refusing to do something about it. Because there are enough Republican senators who would say, okay, I guess we have just, you know, I don't want to go down in history. as the guy who let this clown destroy American power in the world, right? Really, that, I mean, believe, you know, I talked to people in DC, guys like Mitch McConnell would go for impeachment in that situation. No question about it. So, but we're, so we're at this moment where the war in Ukraine, obviously the offensive did not succeed. And I don't say it didn't, I don't say it failed. It failed in what we hoped it would do. But it also ground up just a profoundly large number of Russian troops. The Russian fleet has been chased out of Crimea and is now hiding in the, in the Eastern Black Sea. You know, it, it kept the Russians on our heels to a great degree. But what we discovered is that defense is now paramount.
Defense is now paramount as opposed to going on the offensive this time of year. By the way, total number of Ukrainian and Russian troops killed or wounded since the war in Ukraine began as of August. Actually, I found an older number, August is five, nearing 500,000. And Russia's military approaching 300,000. Again, it's, I mean, it's going to be half a million if it continues at this rate. And the Russian numbers dwarf the Ukrainian figures, which officials put close to 70,000 killed, 100,000 to 120,000 wounded, but almost 400, I mean, 300,000 back in August. Dead Russians. For what?
Well, because here's the thing though, that's interesting about that. They're not mostly dead Russians. They're mostly dead Burghats. They're mostly dead Belarusians. They're mostly dead minorities from outside of the core of the territory. And Putin can do this for a long time if he thinks he can win. Or if he, if he really at this point, I think is just aiming for like a, not a loss, that he keeps part of Ukraine and then he can retrench and go for the rest of it again in five years if he's still alive. And, and you know, there's not these scenarios, there's not necessarily going to be a win for Russia and a loss for Ukraine. You can easily see a scenario that's a loss for both sides.
Right. Well, it already has been.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, kind of already there. But, you know, we're in a, we're in a situation where defense is paramount, right? Between minefields, you know, minefields can now be delivered by artillery, right? Like, it's a very different world where you can fire rounds off and it spreads a bunch of mines all over a quarter mile of territory. So because defense is clearly, I'm sorry, offense is clearly in trouble, I don't now see anyone making a big break.
Anytime soon because of the season?
No, unless somebody makes an enormous mistake. So you're looking at a North Korea, South Korea situation. And the key now to me is to keep Ukraine supplied enough that the Russians just say, you know what, in the end, we're never going to, we may as well make some sort of deal because we're never going to get to Kiev.
Well, that could lose a lot of American public support if you keep sending them money.
But you know, American public support has been weakening a little bit, but not, it's certainly not cratering. And it's one of those things that a lot of Republicans-
Yeah, well, let those numbers year after, year after year, let this stalemate play out. I mean, by the way, no one ever talks about how much money we obviously send to South Korea or plenty of other nations as a result to try to keep the peace, if you will, to try to keep it from breaking out into, into greater war, but still.
As you, as you said, we've chewed up, you know, it's going to be half a million Russians for 4% of the American military budget for one year. And 90% of that money is spent in the United States. And you know what that money does, by the way, which people don't seem to get their heads around? When we say, hey, we're going from doing 7,000 artillery shells that we can build, 155 millimeter shells a month, we're going to have that up to like, I think it was like half a million shells a month they're going to be able to make? That's not us making this capacity and then the capacity disappears. We developed that capacity because it will help us if we ever have to fight China and Taiwan. Right? So in other words, this war in Ukraine is financing the recreation of a big war military industrial complex in the United States, which is what happened in the late 1930s. Everybody started buying American arms. Before we got into World War II, we were already ramping up because we were selling to the French and the Chinese and the British and everybody else. And that's why the United States came into the war with such outrageous capacity already. Because it had the infrastructure already built up to go there because it was selling so many arms. And that's what's happening right now. I mean, this is money, it's not just defensive Ukraine money. It's defensive Taiwan money, right? Because China, if you're planning things strategically, you have to say shit, you know? A year ago, the Americans could never have kept up with the artillery shells they would have needed to defend Taiwan. A year and a half, two years from now, they're going to be able to make half a million shells a month or more. And, and that is a very, very serious difference in how they have to calculate things. So, so in other words, we're, we're really spending the money on ourselves. In the end, it's almost, this is, America, countries don't have friendships, they have interests.
Right.
As Gladstone famously said in Queen Victoria. And, and this is in our interest in a profound and obvious way. And I think we're letting, I think the Republicans in the House and the MAGA people are going to let the chance go where we could have forestalled on a much bigger war later. Because if Ukraine falls, there's another war coming.
Well, we'll still be talking, I'm sure. Want to ask you about, speaking of Ukraine. So the President Volodymyr Zelensky said in a statement that he spoke with the Hungarian Prime Minister Viktor Orban, quote, "As frankly as possible," in a sideline conversation between the two leaders during the inauguration ceremony for Argentina's newly elected president, who is a far-right libertarian lawmaker who won their election last couple of weeks ago after a campaign where he said he would seek to reduce ties to Russia and China, among other policy views that represented a break from, whatever, I'm reading from this article. But Zelensky and Orban meeting on the sidelines of the Argentinian leaders' inauguration. Why were they both there? Why does the leader of Ukraine that is at a war flying to be at the ceremony for their new Argentinian right-wing president?
So the Argentinian right-wing president is a guy who has cloned dogs who he names after, after right-wing economic philosophers. And he had that little rod he was holding, which is like the inauguration rod, and he had each of their dogs inscribed on the rod.
Oh, that sounds normal.
Is insane in many ways. Yes, he's completely crazy. But he is a strong, very strong supporter of Ukraine's entry into the EU, of defending Ukraine, of fighting Russian expansionism and everything else. So it's one of those weird things, like, I think he's a lunatic and I'm very, I think he's potentially dangerous. But if you're the Ukrainians, this is a guy saying, hey, I'm going to give you a bunch of our excess military capacity. Because if you don't stop there, he actually, Milley has a very clear understanding that, the same one I do, about what Russian expansion might mean. What Milley did, which maybe he's just so crazy, he's crazy like a fox, is he put in the seating chart, he put Orban all the way as far as you could be in the box that these, these leaders all sat in, in the corner where he couldn't get out. And then he put, then he put Zelensky right next to him. So Orban got trapped in the corner with Zelensky and did not look happy about it. You know, he, he was sitting there kind of like defensively trying to talk, whereas Zelensky's leaning over on pointing in, you know, giving him the, giving him the Lyndon Johnson treatment.
And everybody, there's video service online that showed them, quote, engage in a heated conversation.
Yeah. And you know, Orban is an anti-liberal, anti-democracy, democracy, pro-Russian shill who lives off of the largesse of the EU that it gives to, to-
He's got him inside a pew with his back against the wall, by the way. I'm watching it now. Wow.
So that's what that was about. And it was a way for Zelensky to be able to corner him and humiliate him basically in, in front of the rest of the world leadership, which is great. But Hungary, you know, Hungary literally, if they didn't get their stipend from the EU, they would be poorer than Argentina certainly. But Orban takes that money with one hand and then the other hand talks about how great Putin is. And by the way, there's, there's territory in Ukraine that is Hungarian speaking. And that's what Orban wants. Hungary has this obsession with the Treaty of Triannon and the parts after World War I, the parts of Europe that they lost that had Hungarian majority speakers. They want that back. It's like this right-wing Hungarian fantasy. And Orban uses that in the same way, you know, people like Trump use American resentments to have and keep himself in power.
Uh, what is that damn Microsoft thing that keeps going off? That sound effect that can never edit out of-
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I've got to figure out how to turn that off.
Never edit it out of our conversations. A lot of people have threatened to end their subscriptions over that sound.
Good, good.
Oh, that's what you're aiming for. So let me ask you about, let's come back home, can we?
Sure.
Let's talk, just want to get your take on the impeachment efforts by Republicans in the House of Joe Biden and the Hunter Biden indictments. And James Comer said, thinks that, told Jake Tapper, he thinks they indicted him to protect him, which Jake Tapper was so incredulous about that it was one of my favorite moments in all cable news. And I played it on yesterday's pod opening, the news segment. But, you know, the Republican Party seems to be divided themselves as if they're about evidence for impeachment or crimes being, that were committed. Joe Biden was somehow influence peddling for China or something. And even some on the right wing, Fox News, they were arguing, Steve Doocy's like, there's no crimes here. You're hearing that from, from a lot of them, asking for evidence. Even Hannity, I think, asked them for evidence one night. I'm sure he'll go all in on it at some point soon. But what are your thoughts on the impeachment efforts and the way that's playing out, both in right-wing media and even within the Republican House?
I mean, it's just an exercise in feeding pure bullshit to your dumbest voters. That's really all it is. They, they want to be able to say there's an impeachment inquiry against Biden so that it hurts them in the general election. You know, they-
And they're doing it because Trump told them to, right? Like, they probably wouldn't be doing it.
Exactly. Now, there's no, this is just that the uninformed, slack-jawed, wall-eyed heart of MAGA.
How dare you.
Those people need, they need their serotonin buttons pushed and this will push it. And they'll just believe whatever they're told anyway because they want to. And so, you know, it's, I mean, Mitt Romney was like, I don't see any evidence of any crime here. So I have no idea why anyone would do this. You know, they, they found, they found a, a payment. Oh, it was like 1,100, 1,300 bucks a month that, that Hunter Biden made to President Biden for a couple of years. And then like, someone puts a picture up of like, he put on social media, my dad helped me buy a truck. And it was like very obviously just the monthly payment for the truck that he was paying his father back for. You know, it's like a, you know, and what's weird is there are so many, there's obvious political hay you could make out of Hunter Biden. I mean, that he spent $368,000, I want to say, in one year on prostitutes and sex clubs and whatever. You don't have to, you don't have to indict anybody for that. That would seem to be completely obvious and easy political footballing you could do. But, you know, they're not interested in that. It's just this dumb, and, and, you know, I don't know, Pete, what it does politically. I'm not sure it does anything politically. It's just fan service.
I think it does. I think it creates a sense of, it tarnishes the Biden campaign to a certain extent that he is a crime boss. I mean, they, did you see that Fox News, Jesse Waters brought on Sammy the Bull, who-
Right.
To say that the Biden crime family is worse than any mafia organization he'd ever seen. And that, that kind of strategy creates maybe doubt, you know, about people who may or may not be enthusiastic in, in voting for him if he's this corrupt guy. But I don't know. That's the only thing I can imagine. I don't know how much of that there, there would be. I don't, you don't-
Right.
I think he's got more-
I just, I think to a degree, there's just so much bullshit in the air that people just start to mark it off. They just don't-
But they did it, you know, I, I guess my better argument would be, and this obviously is a different scenario that you're going to shit on, but they destroyed Hillary Clinton, the Secretary of State, her reputation around Benghazi and said things happened that didn't happen to the point where it made her seem like she wasn't what a lot of people say was a great Secretary of State, but a corrupt person who got Americans killed. And I think that hurt her. I think that hurt her when she ran for president, but-
I think though that she is a little-
Same thing, same strategy.
She had other things. She had 20 years of things hung on her necks that eventually, and by the way, she did herself no favors. Does Joe Biden come across as like a, you know, she, she was very, she just had a thing about it.
Sure. I guess I just mean, I guess I just mean that they come up with fake things. I mean, that's happening right now at my, in my school board to get people outraged by so that they can run someone for office and, and, you know, create whatever chaos or world.
Sure. I think it, I think it really depends on the candidate, whether it works or not. I don't think it works particularly well. I think Joe Biden isn't unpopular because of that. I think Joe Biden's unpopular because people, voters don't love Joe Biden, but they really hate Donald Trump, right? And, and Biden is not, I think what people are looking for, honestly, like when you look at this sort of milieu now and how people are, like, just like, when you see these poll results that, you know, you and I have talked about, Biden's not losing right now because that's going to be, the general election vote's going to be. He's losing right now to Trump because some, people just want change. They're, they're, I think people are grossed out. And as you know, I think Biden is actually an excellent president. But I think what people want is like an Obama. They want, they want somebody that they can feel good about being in the office.
Yeah, but they don't want change to a right-wing authoritarian. You're saying, you're saying that there's not enthusiastic within a progressive or liberal or Democrat moment for, specifically for this current president. They would rather have somebody be more excited about like a Gavin Newsom or a Gretchen Whitmer or a whoever else you want.
I mean, people say that, you know, like if Nikki Haley came in, right, on the Republican side, Trump chokes on a donut tomorrow, we can always hope, and someone like Haley comes in, Haley would, would kick the shit out of Biden in the general election. Why?
That's what a new poll says.
Just because she's younger. And just because she would, she would say a lot of the right things about, no, I'm not going to be an extremist and I'm not going to do this. Even if she would, she would still try to present herself in a positive way.
But, but you don't think she would beat a different candidate necessarily because-
And that's my point. Her versus Gavin Newsom, she probably gets her ass kicked.
Right. Interesting. Okay. Okay. That shows analysis of-
Yeah, I think there's just a, a sense of just-
We'll call that the donut theory. It's a possible hypothetical if Trump weren't the nominee. But any, any thoughts on his latest legal dramas? Are you watching anybody? You reading anybody? You have any predictions to make about how any of these trials are looking right now as we talk in the end of the year?
I mean, certainly losing in New York and he's certainly losing in DC. What's going to happen is going to be, he's going to lose in New York, he's going to be indicted, convicted, I should say, in Washington. But what's interesting about that is, again, you and I talked about this, I looked at the timing and most of the big early primaries are going to be over already, right? But it's going to be happening as those primaries are occurring. Haley's poll numbers have stalled out. It's possible there's a surprise, but I think really in the end, what you're going to have is Trump being convicted of felony when he already basically has the nomination in the bag. And that's going to be just a crazy situation. And, you know, then I'll watch the, I'll start watching the polls around then.
Right, right. Great point.
And then be like, all right, what, what's really gonna happen here? Because if it's June and he's winning by 10 and he's been convicted of a felony, then we got a big problem. Got a really big problem.
Yeah, yeah. I think we already do have a big, a big problem in that he is even being considered after being president for four years and leading an insurrection. I think we have a problem that so many people would even consider some, some they know. By the way, I always, this is my new thing I keep wanting to say to like, anyway, I don't talk to too many Trump supporters, unfortunately, I would, but is, hey, he's a rapist. Like, but like, he raped a lot of women. Like, we, why don't we always start at rape? Like, shouldn't every news story on, on CNN be like, convicted rapist now?
He cheated every business person he ever dealt with. That seems like a big deal. He raped women. That seems like a big deal. He, he-
We knew that. We knew that. We were pretty sure of that before he was elected, but then we're definitely sure after he's elected.
There's this whole, this whole thing where he says, I'll only be a dictator for a day.
Yeah, you like that?
Well, so what that's really, like, it's amazing to be about that is, that's what every dictator says. Every dictator comes in, take over democracy, even Hitler. I'm going to clean it up and then everything, then the people will decide the future of the country. Of course, that never, ever happens. And if Trump gets in on the first day, he'll, he'll push a bunch of things through, like enabling acts basically, that let him do whatever the hell he wants. And when the, when the judiciary tells him not to, I, I've seen Trump people quote Andrew Jackson, who said about the Supreme Court Justice in his first term, you know, if he disagrees with me, with this law, let him try to enforce it. There's nothing but custom that makes the executive branch say, okay, I'm going to listen to Supreme Court. And Trump will just start ignoring them. And, and then you're already, right then, you're in, he doesn't do anything dramatic. He just, Supreme Court says, no, your, your Muslim ban, your new Muslim ban is, is unconstitutional. And he says, well, fuck you, I run the executive branch. I'm doing it anyway. Right? And would they, would you, what would happen then? I mean, do you really think like, the Republicans in the Senate would impeach over that? No, probably not. And so you'd have this like slow boil that's ever getting faster of him doing things and Supreme Court just kind of twiddling their thumbs and go, what do we do? We said it's wrong, but we don't have a police force. We can't arrest him. And, and it just goes from bad to worse there. And I have been really irritating my conservative, anti-Trump friends. There's a lot of people who have this pose of like, oh, I'm in the middle and all you, I hate the MAGA people, but all you resistance lib types, you're getting all freaked out and you're just as bad as them because you're just as hysterical. And I've been gathering a ton of evidence and sending to these guys saying like, no, we're, as Robert Kagan put it, like, we're pretty close to the possibility of dictatorship. And people really hate to hear that. And they hate to hear it because they- And people really hate to hear that. And they hate to hear it because they don't want to, they don't want to grapple with what that means for them.
Right.
Right? And I think this was very, I'm sure very true. I'm, I'm reading a book called Fatherland right now. It's about a New Yorker journalist who went back to Germany to figure out his beloved grandfather's story, who was a Nazi party official in Alsace-Lorraine. But who in every other way, as far as everything he knew about the guy, the guy was great, that he knew of him as a kid. And what like people, people don't realize is this denial of what's happening is so powerful. Right? That you know there's a dictatorship coming, but you have to, you know, if you tell me there's a dictatorship coming, do I have to go get guns? Do I have to get ready to resist? Do I need to move? Do I need to lose a bunch of friends? Do I need to erase my social media? Right? Like, these things are all difficult and complicated. And I think most people don't want to think about it. And I think most people in the end would not resist all that much.
Really, really interesting analysis, uh, that is shared by a lot of historians and, and others, uh, who have been warning of this stuff, who I know you've been obviously reading as well. Speaking of authoritarians, so yesterday Elon Musk and Alex Jones sat down apparently to talk. I don't think that, if they were in the same space, I don't know. I know Tucker Carlson was in the same space-
And Andrew Tate.
As Alex Jones. But I'm just, I just wonder if they were in the same physical space because that's when you really want a rocket to blow up on Elon Musk with them on it. But outside of that, like, it's hard to believe that these guys are both so bad individually. And then when they're together, it just, it's, it's, it's crazy to think of the world that we're living in and how, how similar it is to like, uh, a Marvel or DC universe filled with kind of cartoon villains, like billionaires, like Lex Luthor and all the rest. I mean, it's, it's so, and so there they are, Alex Jones and Elon Musk, Alex Jones and Tucker Carlson. What do you say of, Alex Jones is back on Twitter. What are your thoughts about this? The most despicable American of our time?
So in that call, you've got Tucker Carlson, who supports a fascist dictatorship in Russia and wants it here, basically, uh, who says awful terrible things, total misogynist, you know, total homophobe, et cetera. Then you've got Andrew Tate, who is under indictment in Romania for running a sex trafficking ring.
Yeah.
And openly talked about like, you know, forcible, forcing sex on women, et cetera.
He's radicalized a lot of young American men and, and men around the world with his-
The incel god, basically. Um, and then you have Alex Jones, who basically claimed that a bunch of people whose children were killed at, you know, the Sandy Springs School?
Sandy Hook.
Sandy Hook, thank you. Were, um, were crisis actors and it was all made up.
Yep.
Leading to these people being harassed horrendously for years after their six-year-olds were killed. Um, these are like the, you're right, they're cartoonishly awful people.
Leading to major lawsuits by those families too. Yeah.
Exactly. What's interesting though is how they clearly have a sense that they are in a similar movement. Right? They see themselves as in a similar place.
Yeah.
And what's strange about that is what is the movement? What is that place? I mean, the Nazis had an ideology. They, they had sort of an organizing principle around them, a couple of organizing principles. Um, these guys, what's their organizing principle?
I think Christian nationalism is pretty strong primary influence, not for all of them, but for a lot of them.
Tate's now a Muslim, he says.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Tucker Carlson certainly doesn't go to church. Um-
Yeah, but he's a Chris, but he leads in, in platforms, Christian nationalists.
They do, but they don't-
Whether or not they are themselves. Trump's not, nobody thinks Trump goes to church, but he's the leader of the Christian nationalists.
Well, that's true, but only because, and this is, I think the organizing principle is, these guys are just reactionaries. In other words, the mainstream culture is for it or against it.
Sure.
It's just a, it's just an endless fuck you.
How can I make money off of, and gain power off of dividing people and coming up with bullshit and reacting to things? Yes, that's a really good point that I, you know, I'm, you, you asked their organizing principle, I say Christian nationalism, but the truth is yet more, more than anything else, the thing that unites them is to be reactionaries so as, well, as I stated, to gain power.
If you asked either one of them separately, what was the, what, what would Golden Age America look like? They would all have a different answer for you. It's more that they have monetized their sense of reaction to things.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and they're willing to be extreme in that reaction. And that actually makes them money.
Yeah, no doubt. I mean, look at Alex Jones. I mean, you know, he doesn't believe so much of what he said, and he's made millions and millions of dollars. And that's true of all of the rest of them, but it's, uh, and obviously Trump and so many others that are grift. It's much harder for, for liberals and progressives to do that, although we do, we can, but it's, it's a different, it's a different game. And what we're, we're so often, you know, we have, do have an organized principle about any number of issues and how we can create a government that works for us. And-
Right. There's an ideology. There's an ideology. There's a-
Democracy.
Theory of civic, of civic action that, from the most obnoxious Bernie people to me-
Yeah.
We kind of agree on, on most of the big things, even if we don't agree on the details of those big things.
Yeah, yeah. So-
But this, because these people are like this, because it's just reaction-
Yeah.
That gives me a little bit of hope in one way. Because fascism, fully blown in the Italian or German version, had a futuristic view of the world. They were, they were absolutely fetishists about technology. They believed in motion, action, all these things. And they had like a top-down look at how, how dystopian to me beyond belief, but they had a top-down look on how the world was supposed to work. These guys, I don't really think they have that. It's all, if you look at the, the right in America in its various forms, it's fragmented. But what unites it is just this like absolute hysteria about the middle and the left. So on the one hand, that's good because there is not one big mobilizing movement. On the other hand, it's bad because it's a business. And if anything is hard to eradicate in the United States of America, it's an industry.
Yeah. It once made. Although Elon Musk is doing a hell of a job trying to eradicate Twitter, which he paid $46 billion for.
So Saturday night I went to a birthday party-
I caught you on a technicality.
Exactly. Uh, I went to a birthday party on, on Saturday night and a friend of mine who, um, has a lot of experience in Silicon Valley and was there. And we were talking about Musk. And he was like, no, but Musk is a genius. Musk is an absolute genius. And I was like, but you see him, right? And he says, yeah. And I said, he's a mess, right? Yes. He's showing it's possible to overdose on ketamine, right? Yes. You know, we're like going through all these things and I'm breaking down what a mess everything is for Musk. And I think what we eventually, and there was some beer involved, so excuse the incoherence, but I, I think that eventually what you get down to with Musk is that Musk is like really tracking along the way Henry Ford did, where he got such incredible success that his sort of minor flaws get blown up into major problems. And he's so isolated by his success that like Ford, he starts getting these hobby horses and gets locked into them. And in Musk's, Musk's case, I mean, Musk is turning into a open anti-Semi. He's turning into an open anti-American figure. He's turning into, like, he so needs that, that pick from getting support from reactionaries. They support's basically all they do. And this gets, goes back to my first thing that, you know, Musk is there because he recognizes that's a business. That's his first insight is he recognized all this reactionary stuff could bring in a lot of money.
Right.
And so you take over Twitter and you turn it into a machine for doing that. Except that-
It doesn't, it doesn't supers, like, sorry.
And his mistake, of course, is that yes, it's a business, but it's still a niche business. The real money is getting, getting advertising from Disney and getting advertising from industry and from, you know, from airlines and all that kind of stuff, American Express. I mean, Walmart refuses to be on fucking Twitter now.
Yeah.
Which is like, pretty far, as far to the right of center as you can get and still be within the mainstream is Walmart's management.
Yeah. Well, I'd be interested to know what kind of companies, what kind of people are still advertising there. It's all about where the eyeballs are. That's what advertising is. And the eyeballs are there because of what you're saying, he's trying to create, which is people fighting. I mean, I'll, you and I love watching fights. Uh, you're a huge fan of boxing. I'm probably far even less primitive. I, I'll watch like Hooligans fight at a soccer match in the UK and, and it's entertaining to me. So I, I'm in the fight. I'm arguing it's all about getting that, creating that, bringing the eyeballs, then selling the ads, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter if all of the ad, all of the companies begin to pull out, regardless of how many eyeballs are there, because they-
You can alienate people who want to sell to anybody. Right? If you alienate Disney or alienating company that wants to sell to everybody.
Right.
And, and so he, but Musk misunderstood, misidentified, or is driven by his demons to see it in the, as the reactionary part of his business. And it's not. And it's so, yeah, Musk, I think Musk in five years, I wonder if he's still around. I wonder if he's going to be around in five years. I'm skeptical of that because he looks like terrible and he becomes more and more incoherent by the month. And, uh, you know, if he's not around in five years, by the way, my guess is he's sitting in Saudi Arabia or Moscow.
Well, you may not be far from that, but interesting analysis as always on that and everything else. Uh, any thoughts about Alex Jones being back on that platform? What if anything that means?
It doesn't mean anything to me. I mean, you know, I'm on there, um, mostly for, I get like a news feed out of it. And I post stuff once in a while, but you know, I don't, I block anyone and everyone who even slightly gets my nose at a joint because I'm not there to sit and, you know, wallow in my anger or rage or serotonin or whatever. So, so I actually don't, you know, I, I even block out the places that put like combat footage from Ukraine, the gory stuff. I don't even want to see that, you know? So I'm, I'm maybe not exactly the demographic that's going to give a shit about Alex Jones being on there or Trump. You know, I don't care. I'm not going to read it anyway.
Bill, anything else before I let you go? I really appreciate all these topics. I forget, did I leave anything out that I wanted to talk about or anything else that you wanted to mention to folks?
No, just that every single person who listens to this should call their congressman in the House and every Republican congressman within 50 miles of their house or 100 miles of their house and tell them how much they're going to get screwed electorally if they don't for, for aid for Ukraine.
If they don't vote for aid for Ukraine?
For aid for Ukraine.
Why would that be such a bad outcome for them in, in their next election?
Well, I think that they're going to be in trouble anyway.
How do you make them believe that? How do you make me believe that?
If Ukraine doesn't, doesn't have money by February, they're going to start losing the war rather dramatically. And like all things and, you know, sort of like Vietnam, Vietnam during the Vietnam War, us losing, it was not that, um, politically potent. And you look at the polling and everything, it was not that bad. It was when we lost it after Tet, when you could see that we were really losing it, that's when public opinion went absolutely south against Johnson and everybody else because they were losing a war. And I think that, I think that politicians understand this.
Republican voters are in Republican districts in the House districts, uh, will see Ukraine losing the war and then cause them to vote against their Republican congressman?
Well, you can get the moderates. You can get suburbanites to vote that way. And, and you know, remember like Ukraine losing the war outright, if you think it's been ugly now, well, you're just going to see Buka reproduced on a grand scale again.
What's Buka?
And I think that the politics of that are going to be quite brutal for anyone.
Buka sounds really bad. What is Buka?
Buka is a town in, um, Ukraine where the Russians came in-
Oh, oh.
Tried people out of their houses. They were raping children in front of their parents. Um, and I'm talking four-year-olds getting raped in front of their parents, like-
That's something I wish I didn't know.
Their torture room was in the basement of the grammar school. So this is like-
You think Republican voters are going to care if people are, if kids are tortured in Ukraine?
I do. Because, well, worse than kids tortured in Ukraine is they're suddenly going to realize what, because the Russians are very open about their next war if they win this one. It's going to really hit people that, oh shit, we just could have stopped it then and now it's not.
I am not sure you are right. I hope that you are. I think that's a really interesting thing to follow. And I hope people will call their congressman and say, as you suggested. So, yeah. Damn.
Let's hope.
All right, buddy. Thank you so much for talking to me. As always, I really, really appreciate it whenever we do. And I know everybody else does as well.
Awesome. Thank you all.
There he goes. Billy Boy, it'll, it'll be in DC, everybody. Thank you very much, Bill. As always, go follow Bill on all the social media outlets, including Blue Sky and Twitter and I don't know where else he is. I'll find out. Include links in today's show notes as I do for each and every guest. Please go review the show. Review it. Write a review. Give it a five stars on Apple's iTunes, Apple's podcast app, rather, and Spotify's podcast app. And subscribe to youtube.com/standupwithpete and pete.dominik on TikTok. That's what I'm plugging today. And of course Threads, and I'm just going to keep saying, social media networks and Facebook and MySpace and all of the blogs. Thank you so much for your support and for listening. I hope that you're hanging in there, doing okay, maybe even thriving, my bumblebees here at the end. I hope I'll see you in Las Vegas, March 22nd and 23rd with my friend John Carroll, who plays in and out. He's going to be there with me live in Las Vegas. Get your tickets, your flights now, and we'll be ticketing the event soon after. I promise you that. So see you in Vegas, March 22nd and March 23rd. Hopefully you bumblebees here at the end can come. All right. Take it away, Johnny.
You got to stand up. You got to stare the devil straight in the eye. We got to let him know it's his time to go. See it clear when all we hear is a lie. Don't get up off of your butt, get down off of your face. Even if it ain't a very friendly audience. Look, they'll begin to listen when you start making sense. And you stand up, stand up. No need to point your rifle to defend your town. Just stand up, stand up. You know they can't deny you what you're laying down. Boy, you better stand up, stand up. Show your face of every color, yellow, black, red and brown. See the place where every lost child will finally be found. Only one thing to do before we stand our ground and that's stand up, stand up. Well, the founding fathers saw a land for all. They had to stand up. They had to stand up. They had a keen imagination for the crystal ball, drawing all the plans were taken. But all they had to go on was the time they were in with other causes for loss and since they weren't even sent. They knew the change was going to come before the change would begin. They had to stand up. All right, they had to stand up. We got to stand up. We got to look the devil's bearing the eye. We got to let him know it's his time to go. Make it clear when all we hear is a lie. Why you lying awake, wondering where the money all went? It'll be the cost of freedom that'll go on spin. You can see him flee the scene of that experiment. If you stand up, stand up. All right. We got to speak up. We got to reach up and raise your voice in every way you know how. Don't be told yourself. You got to show up. Ain't no better time to do it than now. No need to pledge allegiance to no wanton tribe. Rise up. Show obedience to the voice inside and listen well. And he'll tell you not to run and hide. He says, stand up, stand up. Oh, you got to stand up. Oh, come on. Just stand up. Everybody got to stand up in the darkest hour. Stand up. People got the power. Stand up. Come on, 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 stand up.